At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Public Finance Authority Joint Meeting and the Montebello City Council today, August 10th, Wednesday. If the City Clerk slash Secretary of the Authority, please call the role.
Yes, Mayor, I'll be doing two separate roll calls just for clarification. Councilor Torres.
Here.
Councilor Melendez.
Here.
Councilor Peralta.
President.
Mayor Potem Jimenez.
Here.
Mayor Cobus-Cothorn.
And I am here. Now, Public Financing Authority, please.
Member Torres.
Here.
Member Melendez.
Here.
Member Peralta.
President.
Vice Chairman Jimenez.
Here.
Chairman Cobus-Cothorn.
And I am here. Thank you. And at this time, will the City Attorney please read the statement of oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and the public. At this time, the general public may address the City Council/PFA on closed-session items. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for individual members of the public to speak on closed-session items shall not exceed three minutes per person. State law prohibits the City Council/PFA from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the mayor. There are... Excuse me. Four closed-session items on the agenda this evening, and I'll read those now. Item one is threat to public services or facilities, Government Code Section 54957. Consultation with the City Manager, Police Chief, City Attorney, and other related officials. Item two, conference with real property negotiations, and there are two properties for discussion. Both are pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The first is property identified as the Bus Depot, the second as 701 West Woodier Boulevard, Montebello, with a negotiating party on the first and second being the City Manager on behalf of the city. On the first site, Pico Rivera, for the Bus Depot, and the second property at 701 West Woodier being Jimmy's property. Item three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D1, the Parvez versus City of Montebello matter. And finally, public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957, title City Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards for the closed session?
We have one. The City Clerk will answer.
We do have one speaker card for closed session.
Okay. Madam Mayor, may we hear that at this time?
Please.
Okay.
Speaker card is for Will Severa.
While Mr. Severa is walking in the podium, I'll just note for the record that there are no written comments for a closed session. Thank you. Mr. Severa, the floor is yours.
Will Severa, resident of Montebello for 40 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The subject that I want to touch upon is the letter to ACLU, and that was given to the city. Unfortunately, not until we have an audit or does ACLU get involved in the city of Montebello, does any type of action get taken place. And when it does, it becomes, oh, it's a political play. When you guys are all sworn in, part of your oath of office is to uphold the Constitution. And there's multiple lawsuits, and we have two people that attended law school that should be able to look up the precedences that stand about being able to speak. And the other thing is also, in the letter from ACLU, it specifically says we do not need to direct our messages to the mayor. So I just wanted to clarify that. They already had the Orange County Board of Supervisors that recently had a lawsuit, and they lost. The subject matter that I would like to discuss, especially for the closed session, is for the City Manager's contract. It violates several laws that they specifically spoke about. Just because they're council members does not mean that they cannot critique. They do not lose their rights as elected officials. So they are able to critique, or criticize, or praise any of the employees. It's a public interest because it's our financial dollars. I've noticed a trend here going on where if anybody's in disagreement, or we've had whistleblowers, they get removed, and we have lawsuits. As a matter of fact, the current one with Maria Perez, it looks like it was filed this year. So we have multiple, and if you go online, you can look up all the lawsuits against Montebello. During these times that has taken place with the current council, as well as with the current City Manager. And extending these contracts, we already just gave a pay raise of over $100,000 so we could keep him because we're not gonna... They did not want to let him go to Santa Monica, which is your prerogative. However, the stipulations of communications and stuff like that, I think is a violation. And at the end of the day, the City Attorney is constantly saying, we have a chain of command. And on that ordinance for the chain of command, it's Residence Council/City Manager. And when you guys are elected, you're here to represent us. I hope that you guys do not approve the current contract. And, you know, this is election season. You cannot fire a City Manager, Police Chief, or anybody along those lines within the first six months that the elections are over and they're just coming in. So why would we be accepting a contract change six months before elections come up? I believe these are a lot of issues, and unfortunately... Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Managers, for the record, I wanted to note that neither of those items are on the closed-session agenda. City Manager's contract is on the open session agenda, and the ACLU issue is not on tonight's agenda. Be appropriate at this time to recess into closed session to discuss the agendized items.
Okay, we'll recess and be back shortly. Thank you.
She asked something to say about the closed-session items that she put in the paperwork.
Reflect that we do not have a comment card for Ms. Eisner on closed-session items. Ms. Eisner, you will be free.
It's ABC. Seriously, look at the first card I turned in.
Madam Mayor, I recommend that we... At your pleasure, we are free to recess in a closed session at this time.
I got here early just so I could do that, you know, so... If you see it, it's squinched up at the top. It said, it said closed session items. Yeah, I took it off, see? Yeah, okay. So here I am, drinking. It's very confusing.
Please wait, ma'am. We'll indicate when you can start.
Just a second, ma'am.
For the record, can we clarify whether or not Ms. Eisner has submitted a comment card?
She wrote a small comment.
Okay. Okay. Please try to write as legibly as you can and use the lines provided will be helpful for staff. It was inadvertent, Ms. Eisner. We did not intend to skip you. Your three minutes may begin now.
Out of bureaucracy. May I speak now? Okay. First of all, I'm Margot Eisner, longtime, longtime resident of the city. So first of all, I want to know that my name is here, even though these are closed sessions. I believe it is important and vital that every single detail be available about every single thing that the City Manager is working with money, our money, to make contracts and agreements with property owners and entities that are private profit. We need to know the details. I don't understand why this is stuck in this and... Where is the access to the information for these things? And how can we make that accessible to us, the public, so we have input on helping to make these decisions? And the other thing with the threat to public services, what are those threats? I think this whole idea of closed sessions is a little bit, like, not so good for us, the people, the taxpayers, et cetera, the residents, and that we need to know what the existing litigation is that's being dealt with so that we can understand what our representatives and our City Manager, et cetera, are dealing with. Because it affects all of us. And I think that's my main thing about why I really am not thrilled with closed sessions and hoping that there's a way to tell us the information in a factual, objective way so that we can evaluate. I just want to say about this Jimmy's property. He was given money to get that property, to sell it to the city, then he went to another city and opened another business. So the city didn't get any benefit from that transaction. So that's why I'd like to make sure that whatever is going on in these financial transactions actually benefits the city, you know, including the city of Pico or Vida. I mean, why should they get money and we maybe don't? Okay? So that's what I'm going to make sure, that we know the details and help influence what goes on so that our city, our taxpayers benefit. Okay? That's not leaving it up to some third party to do it, but we should have it all revealed to us. Thank you very much.
Okay, that does conclude the closed-session comments. We are now free to recess in a closed session.
We'll return shortly. Thank you.
Okay, we are back from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, can you please report back on the four items?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor. Let me pull up my agenda real quick. Okay. Item one, threat to public services or facilities, Government Code Section 54957. Consultation with City Manager, Police Chief, City Attorney and other related public officials. Records should reflect that all five members of the City Council did participate in this and the other four items listed on the agenda. Brief update on COVID-19 related issues was provided by staff, but there was no action or direction taken by the City Council on this, nothing further to report. Item two, conference with real property negotiator, Government Code Section 54956.8. For the bus depot property and the agency negotiators listed on your agenda, under negotiation price and terms. City staff and the City Manager provided an update to the City Council on the status of these negotiations, but there was no action taken, and thus nothing to report. Item B, Government Code Section 54956.8, also real property asset, this one located at 701 West Whittier Boulevard, Montebello. This item was not discussed as there was no update to provide. Item three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D1, the Perez versus City Montebello matter. Records should reflect that City Attorney's Office provided a briefing on settlement efforts associated with this matter. Settlement authority was provided by the City Council on the terms and conditions discussed in closed session, but that settlement is not yet final or, and therefore not reportable. Finally, item four, public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957. City manager position, City Council engaged in a brief discussion on this matter, no action was taken. This item does appear on the open session agenda related to the City Manager's employment agreement. Honorable Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you. On to the regular portion of our meeting. We will begin with our invocation, our City Clerk, Jimenez.
As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Thank you. And for our pledge of allegiance, our Director, Nick Rozo, Army veteran, is walking up U.S. National Team Champion, Alina Matrasonian. Please give him.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Alina, and thank you what you're doing for our country. Okay, at this time, Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda, and Executive Director also?
We have no changes, Mayor.
Great. Now, we're going to go on to our presentations. First, we have Citizen of the Month, Manuel Sanchez. I will read a little bit about him, then I'll invite my colleagues to go down with me. So, Lion Manny Sanchez is the August Citizen of the Month. A Long Beach native, Manny has been an active member of the Montebello Lions Club since 2015. Always interested in helping others, Manny became a lion to better serve the community. Some of the service projects he has participated in include clothing and school supply distributions, connecting community members with free eye exams, assisting with the donation of Thanksgiving baskets and Christmas toys, providing hygiene kits to those experiencing homelessness, and he is also an international trainer for the Lions members. When Manny is volunteering countless hours to Montebello service projects, he also spends time at the Red Cross as a lead volunteer and disaster instructor. time at the Red Cross as a lead volunteer and disaster instructor. He previously served during Hurricane Sandy as the leader of six mobile feeding units, serving over 1,600 meals a day in New York. Locally, he has helped families displaced by fires, finding temporary housing as a shelter manager for most local disasters. For his contribution as lion, Manny has received several commendations and awards, most recently being Lions Club President Humanitarian Award, the highest honor within the organization, given only 12 members each year of the Globe. This year, Manny and his fellow lion team will be recognized for raising over 1.1 million in fundraising. Manny says, "Serving the community and the city is the most enjoyable way to make a positive impact." I'd like to personally thank Manny and the Montebello Lions Club for all that they do for the city of Montebello, which is an amazing place to live. Your selfishness efforts allow for our community to enjoy programs, services, that would not be possible without volunteers like you. So, if my colleagues will go down, let's present Manny with the Citizen of the Month. So, Manuel Sanchez, in appreciation for your commitment to serve our city's residents and your significant contributions to improve the quality of life in our community, myself and my colleagues present to you a certificate of recognition as August Citizen of the Month.
Would you like to say?
Okay, okay. First, I'm very grateful, thank you very much. It's been exciting, but as they say, we're here to be partners, to do service, it's exciting. It's like, if you've seen us at the, what was it, Night Out, just giving out apples, that was fun. So, we're hoping to do more, and just stay tuned, because we've got a lot of more exciting ideas. And we're turning 100 years old in 2025.
Wow, 100?
It's the Wheaties. Anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate it, you want to read?
Can we invite the Lions, the rest of the Lions?
Cindy, Amelia, Maria, come on up.
Let's take a picture.
Here we go, everybody. One, two, three.
Thank you, thank you. We think we have a holder for this.
Congratulations to you.
They would treat me organized.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you again, Manny.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So, next.
We're here to know.
Who's next? Who's next? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna try not to break more stuff. At this time, I'd like to invite Alina Metrosonian back up to receive her certificate of recognition today. We are proudly recognizing Alina, who is only 12 years old, for recently achieving a spot on the U.S. National Team. Alina competed in the Pan Am Championships in Bulgaria, and placed in the bronze medal that you'll see around her neck for the championships. Congratulations on this accomplishment, and also, her family, and her coaches, and everyone who's supported her, especially the City of Montebello and all of the United States of America. So, Alina, please come on. So, myself and my husband and I got you a little something here, so, because I know it costs a lot to travel, so, may I give this to Mom?
Thank you.
A $100 gift card from husband and I. Let me show the medals.
Show the bling bling.
They're hiding.
They're hiding.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm 70, I don't know.
Whoa, I want to be you when I grow up. You look great.
All right, everybody look right here at this camera, right here on three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you so much for the vote.
Thank you again, thank you. Oh, and also, thank you to the Montebello reporter for reporting this story. And now?
Next time, gold medal for the world.
Okay. So, there were a few gentlemen in the audience that also look good, so if I can have the Montebello Fire Department, please come up, who is turning 100. And as well as our MCAP, all of you are included, MCAP's included, you can't hide. I know, please, can we put the little? Should we put the little thing down?
We'll see if we need to pull those out, hopefully not.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like I can.
Is this all of them? Yes, okay. So, with this proclamation, it's for the Montebello, wait, I'm sorry, chief, come here. Where are you at? So, it includes the fire department, the MCAP department, fire admin, we have one for every station, because I know Station 3 kind of gets a little forgotten, but the proclamation reads, "The City of Montebello Fire Department, operating as the Montebello Fire Department, is celebrating its centennial anniversary in 2022. Whereas, since June 20, 1922, the Montebello Fire Department has protected the lives and protected the properties of residents of the City of Montebello and surrounding area with honor and integrity. The Montebello Fire Department's first fire apparatus was a Hirsch combination engine and pumper that was housed at a rented fire station at 301, oh, sorry, 309 West Whittier Boulevard. Whereas, the City of Montebello Fire Department was founded on the core values of courage, commitment, and community. Whereas, the Montebello Fire Department is an all-risk organization and follows the firefighter-perimedic model, acting as a first responder for all emergency medical and service needs. The Montebello Fire Department provides reliable emergency response handling approximately 8,000 of the calls per year. The Montebello Fire Department provides mental health resources..." See you over there. "...and vulnerable populations through the Montebello Community Assistance Program", that's our MCAP program, "consisting of a team of paramedic firefighters and two social workers and a housing manager. The Montebello Fire Department has made extraordinary advances in the last 100 years to save lives, property, modernize equipment, and provide educational outreach to the community. So, therefore, I, Kimberly Ann Cobos-Cothorn, Mayor of the City of Montebello, do hereby proclaim, today as the 100th anniversary of the Montebello Fire Department and the City of Montebello." Do you have the other ones? And, wait, let me get, one more, I have two more. MCAP? I'm sorry, I'm gonna pick favorites? I'm gonna pick favorites?
We were explorers together, Mikey, so come on.
Sorry, sorry.
You were also when I was an explorer, a lot of these.
Gentlemen were. Explorer, move with your captains or advisors, they would make me throw ropes and ladders, so.
It's been a long, long time.
I favor them, but I love you guys too, you know, I love PD too.
All right, everyone, here we go, right here on three, one, two, three. All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Card. It's a thank you card from Alina. I know you got one.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, so cute.
So, again, thank you so much, Manny, for all that you do, our Montebello Fire Department. Alina, you don't have to stay, you can get up, go and have a good dinner, and enjoy the rest of the night. Thank you. So, this month, we are recognizing August as National Wellness Month and encourages healthy lifestyles and routines. While it may seem like a simple concept, self-care is easy to ignore, especially when we get caught up in the stresses of everyday life. We may navigate the pandemic and readjust the changes, now more than ever, we encourage everyone to choose wellness and make small changes to impact one's health in a positive way, physically, mentally, and emotionally. National Wellness Month focuses on self-care, managing stress, and promoting healthy routines that take place in many forms. Some simple ways to take charge of your health, to make national wellness a priority, include 30 minutes of exercise, disconnecting from social media, spending time outdoors, maybe take a stroll at Taylor Ranch, or visit the Montebello Barnyard Zoo at Grant Ray, to put the animals under, to reduce stress. To learn more about National Wellness Month, what you can do is visit the City of Montebello's website. So, at this time, we will proceed with the public comments.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. At this time, the general public may address the City Council/PFA on both non-agenda and agenda items. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for individuals to speak should not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the City Council and PFA from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the Mayor.
Before we start the public comments of tonight's meeting, I'd like to address the issue of the ACLU letter that was sent to the city last Friday, and we have a number of comment cards that were turned in. After receiving this letter, I did have a meeting on Monday morning, first thing, with the City Manager, the City Attorney, and the City Clerk's Office, so I wanted to assure everyone here tonight and everyone watching and listening that the city is taking this matter seriously. We also want to do what's careful and proper evaluation of the letter outlined by ACLU. I would like to make a motion to direct the City Manager, the City Attorney, and the City Clerk's Office to review and analyze the claims set forth in the ACLU letter, and prepare a response which outlines alternatives for the City Council in a manner which we conduct our meetings. If changes are needed, I'd like to know. If not, I still would like to know about that also. At this time, can I have a second to my motion?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment, or just briefly.
May I put him?
He did sell second?
He seconded.
Okay.
Go ahead, may I put him?
We shouldn't even be addressing this right now, but I just want to say that just because the ACLU makes certain threats that are supported by one of our council members, doesn't mean that they're right. However, I do want the city to address this and not jump into conclusions without the proper review of these claims. I also support the rights of every person that walks in here, and their viewpoints, but I feel we all have a responsibility to our city staff, to our employees, and to our council colleagues. Recently, there's been a lot of social media activity, this ongoing approach by one of our council members to publicly attack our city clerk, our city staff, our city manager, our city attorney, and other city staff. So, I would hope that in reviewing and taking this approach to review the claims and the concerns of the ACLU, that our city staff also provides an approach to address the issues we previously raised about Councilmember Torres and the harassment of staff. So, with that said, I want to support this motion, I know Sal seconded already, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we must be responsible leaders, and yes, we need to evaluate the ACLU claims in a reasonable fashion.
Thank you. For a speaker card.
Madam Mayor, are we allowed to make comments?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Torres.
Thank you. I just want to point out in my honorable colleague's comments there that defense of an idea is interpreted as a tax on a person. And this has been a common thread with some of my colleagues, that you cannot stand for a philosophy, for a thought, for a right, without it being interpreted as something personal. I'll just say it straight out, my colleague was obviously alluding to some of the posts and some of the comments that I've made, and just as all of our residents have their First Amendment rights to speak, I am expressing my opinion and my views, and I would like to see, in this instance, council do the right thing, and in a public, open meeting, discuss the provisions of the ordinance, come up with solutions, and let the community be a part of that conversation. Because far too often, do policies end up in our agenda, already formulated, essentially in their final form, with conversations that have happened in the background. And I think, in this instance, our community deserves to hear exactly what the council members themselves believe, because this is a very serious situation, it is a very, and as I've tried to point out to my colleagues before, to no avail, it is something, a right that is fundamental, our First Amendment right, our right for political discourse, the foundation on which this country was based. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Honorable Mayor, proceed to reading the written comments, and then we'll proceed to the oral comments. Okay, the first comment is from Fiona Remmers. "Good evening, I would like to submit the following for public comment at the August 10, 2022 regular City Council meeting. Good evening, members of the City Council, my name is Fiona Remmers, and I'm pleased to serve as your new community library manager at Chet Holyfield Library in South Montebello. The library continues to offer free resources to meet your informational and recreational needs. We are an ideal homework spot and a place to check out a laptop, State Park pass, or the latest bestseller. Please visit us Monday through Friday, or online at lacountylibrary.org. I look forward to meeting you in person soon and sharing about upcoming programs at the library. Thank you." Next comment is from Theo Tomuk. "The fundamentals of free speech for and against is provided by the U.S. Constitution and cannot be denied or suspended." "The fundamentals of free speech for and against is provided by the U.S. Constitution and cannot be denied or suppressed. The city of Montebello and the City Council must right the wrong." Tom and Alexandria Uk. Next comment is from Martin Arcos. "Hello, Madam Mayor, Council, and Chiefs. I would like to thank you for bringing back the feel of family. First, the fireworks show was spectacular. I told my children when I was their age, we would go to the city park and watch fireworks. They were nowhere as grand as the ones on July 2. Then the street event was so much fun, there were kids attractions, then the music was fantastic. The best part was it was free to the community. I'm sure Torres will complain like he always does, but tell me if I'm wrong, didn't he get paid for the five meetings he missed? How much did that cost us taxpayers? On Facebook one week, he was acting like his mental condition was so dire, then two weeks later, he's in Mexico water rafting and horseback riding. At last meeting, we could post and brag about his vacation, but he was a no-show at last council meeting, and I did not hear his name, so I guess he doesn't care about city business. Also, I'd like to thank David S., the Parks Director, for all the wonderful programs in our city and for all his hard work and dedication to our community. He truly deserves a raise. If the city had to pay him by the hour, the overtime alone would be a lot of money. He's always there at the start, and when we're leaving, he's still there. Our city is very lucky to have great staff. I see positive changes, our streets are looking good, I see more positive police presence driving around, and finally, our fire department has new fire trucks. At an open house at the fire station, I remember seeing duct tape holding the fire truck together. They said they couldn't get parts because the company went out of business. Again, thank you for the great job you're doing. Sincerely, Martin Arcos." Next comment is from Amanda Johnson. "Dear Mayor Cobos Cawthorn and honorable members of the City Council, I want to express my disapproval with ordinance 2443 and further express my agreement with the ACLU, SoCal. Not only does this ordinance violate the Brown Act, it also violates the First Amendment. The public has the right to express their views to any public official during the meeting regarding an item being debated or any matter of public interest. This ordinance shields elected officials and appointed officers from accountability to the extent it impedes on everyone's right to express their thoughts on city matters. I urge that the Montebello City Council consider repealing the ordinance that we may consider to provide necessary input to the officials who we have elected. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Amanda Johansson." Okay. This is to the City Council. "Thank you for allowing me to provide comment via email regarding the intent to suppress citizens' rights by enacting ordinance 2443-City Council Procedures. As a citizen of Montebello, I have the right and privilege to speak to you all in this public forum regarding issues that affect our city. As stated within the Brown Act, I understand and agree with the need to control a public audience and to have an expectation of decorum and respect. However, the implementation of this ordinance goes beyond that by imposing limitations on public opinion, input, and/or criticism of your actions and directions. Your duty to serve the city of Montebello as my elected representative requires you be open to respectful discussion with your constituents regarding matters that affect Montebello's citizens and city operations. Without the citizens being able to provide input, how would you know what's in the city or city's best interest? How will we be able to initiate positive change? Open communication is key with issue identification and resolution. Without this open communication, we no longer have a democracy, but we now move closer to dictatorship, tyranny, inequality, and unfairness. The Brown Act continues by stipulating that city officials may not stop or limit public response because of a city official's personal disagreement with the citizens' point of view. Your proposed intent to limit the public's voice is not only a violation of the Brown Act, but also the Constitution and California law. This has been confirmed by the notification the city received by the ACLU. More importantly, it should violate professional ethics and morals as a public official. Please consider terminating this initiative and allowing Montebello to once again flourish based on the voices of its citizens and ethical actions of its elected representatives. And just to remind you all, the citizens elected you to depend on you, to make decisions in the best interest of your constituency and not for your own personal gain or notoriety. Respectfully, Dr. Patty Solerito Sanchez." Next comment is from Bill Cervesis. Cervesis, excuse me. "Hello, Mayor, Council, and Chiefs." "Hello, Mayor, Council, and Chiefs. This meeting, I'd like to address the ACLU mess brought by Councilman Torres versus the city. You're patting yourselves on the back for an issue you have been trying to make relevant. In all our city history, the comments have always been addressed to the mayor. By allowing speakers to address council members directly is going to cause a circus atmosphere. Are speakers going to be allowed to rebuttal? Because presently, we're not allowed to speak once we finish our time. How will any city business be conducted? During oral comments, allowing speakers to speak directly to council members could result in actions like Torres once was allowed to speak for thirty-three minutes. If I had been present at the meeting, I would have yelled out to shut up. Will it be acceptable for council members to speak against a resident speaker's opinion? Where are our First Amendment rights? As a longtime resident, I am against this stupid move by Torres using the ACLU. Enough, do your job and respect your colleagues." This next one is lengthy. Madam Clerk, can I get the timer on this one? Yeah. And there are two, oh, I guess they are different. Okay. Councilmember Peralta, but they addressed it Scarlet. "We represent hundreds of Montebello residents whose primary interest is ensuring a more ideal community to live, play, and work, and most importantly, ensuring their own financial security for the foreseeable future. These resident workers are primarily hourly workers who live and work in the Montebello community and are eager to see the city they live in and love continually improve for their benefit. This is amplified greatly by unprecedented rise in the inflation rates that in some cases exceed thirty percent on consumer staples like energy and food. In fact, a recent article showed something as basic as a Target shopping trip exceeded thirty-seven percent inflation from just one year ago on items like toilet paper, non-alcoholic beverages, sundries, and more. These are the issues and daily challenges the resident workers care deeply about. In fact, 'care deeply about' doesn't even begin to scratch the surface. Every day, people in this community are making heartbreaking choices. Can I afford to fill up even partially my tank of gas? And how will I ensure my kid can get to school safely? Because now I work a second job in the morning because costs have dramatically exceeded stagnating incomes. With regard to the issues regarding the ACLU and Montebello City Council, these resident workers quite simply do not care. It is one hundred percent insider baseball that does not meaningfully move the needle for any resident in any way, shape, or form with regards to their financial prosperity going forward into the future. How does this item change any of that for any team member or resident in the community? How does this item meaningfully improve anyone's lives other than your own, trying to attack your colleagues because you want to feel temporarily important in your very important elected position, representing a grand total of what will be a few thousand total votes in a world of over seven billion? There is an old Yiddish phrase, "To a worm and horseradish, the world in its entirety is horseradish." Well, unfortunately for you, the world in which we live does not include your insider baseball political games and tactics, none of which has helped us on an everyday basis, nor does it include the recent home one of you bought. Congratulations, by the way. Wait, you bought a home right now that's close to a million dollars really quickly after being elected to council? Interesting. Why is it that politicians, even low-level ones like you in tiny cities, always seem to experience such extravagant financial gains so quickly after being elected when there was so little evidence of any financial prosperity prior to being elected? Well, I digress. What really counts here is that you were elected to oversee the city, not run it day by day in excruciating minutia, that the city management run the city and do what you were elected to do and what councils in the city with a far more prosperity have done for decades. Talk to residents, attend ribbon-cutting ceremonies, set high-level policy, innovate, and think about the future, promote stability for business, and be a leader in difficult times. Not bickering and arguing, posting inflammatory Instagram posts, getting involved in BS employee concerns, plying against each other and trying to control a council in a very small city in the suburbs of Los Angeles. Posting an Instagram post on the ACLU as a vote for me in District Two, is that even legal? Should a council member be commenting on a legal matter? After a colleague, Councilmember Torres, so slyly brings in the ACLU." Should I finish?
Yes.
"Such a noted farce for positivity after all. That demeans the city and your colleagues in promoting it really goes against everything you should be doing, which is promoting city positivity and cheerleading for the city and its success, not publicizing negative things your colleagues has drummed up. Would a member of the Board of Directors of a public company ever disparage their own company and promote such disparagement and then claim it was for the better of the company? Never. They would internally work to fix whatever issues they brought existed and not use it as an opportunity to promote themselves. But perhaps we are asking for too much, after all, because clearly you are not a Board of Directors member of a prestigious company. You are a council member who won with a few thousand votes in a place that used to be considered nice, who is clamoring to unnecessarily win our election by so elegantly exposing your colleagues as terrible so you can attempt to take over the majority of the council and force your will upon the city. We usually enjoy wishing people well, but in this case, we actually do not." Anonymous. "Please, you do not need to run in November, and you know it. You already have your two at-large seat for two more years, and you're just running for a feeling of importance, so why are you running again?" This next one, I'd also like a timer. This one is addressed to Councilmember Torres. "Like we mentioned, your protege, Councilmember, this is Scarlet. "We represent hundreds of Montebello residents working whose primary interest is in ensuring a more ideal community to live, work, and play, and most importantly, ensuring their own financial security for the foreseeable future. These resident workers are primarily hourly workers who live and work in the Montebello community and are eager to see the city they live in and love continually improve for their benefit. These residents are incredibly curious. Besides reaching out to the ACLU to have them belittle your colleagues, what have you done for us lately? All we've heard about you is your continual negativity, your utter insistence to dive into the absolute monotony and minutia of little tiny meaningless things, and your power-hungry struggle to control the city council so you and your colleague Scarlet can have some relevance and control. Or maybe the control of council helps the both of you with your close-to-million-dollar, single-family residences. Wait, David, you don't have a job. That should come as a surprise to many in the city, but honestly, look at the surrounding area. It's full of elected officials with no gainful employment who simply..." I'm gonna skip that part. I believe it's, no, oh. "...who simply suck on the teeth of the machine that elected them in the first place. And then the residents wonder why their communities stagnate and look the way they do. Ray Basia and AAE, the former city engineer, is not a job, David. And since their removal, I'm sure that well has really dried up. Our condolences. Maybe Frankenstein Ray will help you out in some other way, hoping you'll get the majority again. Let's get back to this ACLU thing. Pretend for a moment you were employed. Let's give it a moment, because you'll need to suspend your disbelief at the thought of actually working. Let's give that a few moments more. We hope you didn't leave your job at the District Attorney's Office of L.A. because you were misbehaving now. That would be a shocker. I mean, after all, obviously, the misbehavior and harassment that was exposed in Montebello couldn't be a character flaw that would seep into your former environment, could it? It had to have been a political attack by your colleagues in Montebello and then coordinated with an employment attack by your superiors at the L.A. District Attorney's Office, a conspiracy. That sort of rumor mill will even get felon Will Cervesa fired up. Felon Will Cervesa, as in can't vote, will Cervesa, but public comments all the time and is on..." I'm gonna skip that, it's a personal privacy issue. Yeah, I'm gonna skip. "Your behavior with the ACLU and the negative promotion you are dumping up is nothing more than an attempt to attack your colleagues as you seek, strive, and muster up all the hatred you have to eliminate your colleagues so you can hold the majority on council and enact your will upon it. Shouldn't council members represent the people? Do you, David, as an unemployed man with a close to a million-dollar, single-family residence, really represent your community? Your continual promotion of negativity demeans the city and your colleagues in promoting it really does go against everything you should be doing, which is promoting city positivity and cheerleading for the city and its success, not publicizing negative things your colleagues drummed up. Would a member of the Board of Directors of a public company ever disparage their own company and promote such disparagement and then claim it was for the betterment of the company? Never." Should I finish? I have two lines left. "They would internally work to fix whatever issues they thought existed and not use it as an opportunity to promote themselves. In your heart of hearts, David, think about this. If you were in control of council, would you really be bringing in the ACLU to spew negativity about the city? Or would all of a sudden your post magically turn all positive the environment you were in control?" Anonymous. Next speaker. "Hello, my name is Anna Estrada. I'm writing regarding this stupid Facebook post by Councilmember Peralta linking the city manager with the ACLU story. I've spoken to you, and no, there's no way you wrote that post yourself. I see the one with black background is the same post as another woman. Either she wrote that post, or someone else did. Please, next time you are given something to read prepared for you, would you so kindly practice reading it? Were you not allowed to use your phone? It was so obvious both you and Torres couldn't be coached, you were both lost. As a person that answers questions for you to help, so you don't say um, um, over and over. At the last meeting while we were watching at home, it became a game. How many times you said um? It was nineteen. I'm happy all districts are up for the November election and will be helping out. Steve Andretti, to beat Ms. Peralta, you do absolutely nothing to better our community, but take pictures of yourself, that's when you attend meetings. Longtime resident, Anna Estrada." And the final written comment. "Mayor Cobos Cawthorn, honorable mayors of the City Council, I am submitting this public comment for the council's August 10, 2022 regular meeting. Multiple provisions in ordinance 2443 recently enacted by the City Council trigger grave constitutional concerns. The provisions in the ordinance limiting the public's ability to direct comments to individual members of the City Council as well as the provisions prohibiting criticism of staff or City Council members over broad and unjustified restrictions on protected speech. To the extent the City Council justifies these unlawful provisions by reference to similar provisions in other jurisdictions, we note that, one, those referenced provisions also violate the First Amendment, and, two, Montebello is the only jurisdiction we are aware of that is enacted in ordinance as opposed to a resolution or policy to this effect. Our letter detailing the legal basis of our concerns is attached. The council must repeal or substantially alter these illegal provisions or be prepared to defend them in court. Zorn McKinley, Staff Attorney, First Amendment Democracy, ACLU Foundation." That is the last public comment, Mayor. I would like to briefly respond to the City Council's request and direction to my office to work with the city manager, to, of course, attempt to resolve and remedy this issue and concern of the ACLU. I would like to clarify for some factual inaccuracies from the record, from Ms. McKinney's email as well as her written correspondence that I believe has made the media rounds. Any member of the public can find it. This is not a new policy. In fact, this policy has been in place for over forty years. It was established by a resolution before I was born, probably before the mayor was born. So it has been carried through, through various councils, administrations, and policies. There's a resolution that affect. Any member of the public can submit a PRA, and we'd be happy to give you a copy of that. Secondarily, I'd also disagree with Ms. McKinney on the characterization of, you know, the truth of the matter is, Montebello is not alone in this policy. In the forty minutes since Ms. McKinney sent her email, I located three other jurisdictions in Southern California with identical ordinances to ours. Of course, none of that undermines or limits staff's goal to protect and preserve First Amendment rights. So of course, Mayor, we will do everything we can to come to a meeting of the minds, but just wanted to state for the record, this is not a new policy. And to my knowledge, as in fact, one of the USC professors quoted in another media article, First Amendment instances are factual. A policy can say one thing, and it's how it's applied that creates the unconstitutional issue. This community has a robust history of criticizing members of this body and this chamber. And I don't believe that we've applied that policy in an unconstitutional way. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, City Clerk, can you please turn to oral comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a few speaker cards. First speaker will be Will Severo, speaking on agenda items ten, eleven, twelve, and twenty-two. After Will Severo is gonna be Michael Chee.
Will Severo, thank you. Man, it's a lot of the stuff that's going on, and it's a lot of anonymous people. It's great. And by the way, my name is Severo, and I'm actually a high-propensity voter, and I can vote, and you could pull it up in your paperwork for several other items. So whoever is giving information is highly misinformed. I find it very hypocritical about Jimenez, especially when it comes down to a judge actually explaining to her when she tried to file a harassment and a restraining order on me, and they very specifically laid it out for you. And it's pretty much the same thing that's going on right now. Yeah, it was in the paper too. You remember. Remember, you couldn't stay in the room either. But furthermore, you know, Officer David Kim took Jimenez to the court, and yet you guys fired Captain Creswell. Now, is it because Creswell is African-American, or because he's a whistleblower? Because it seems to be the trend. It's also in newspaper articles about the city manager intimidating the MP away and trying to have, Michael did not like any type of micromanagement by the council dais. And then there was other things that was written out there, but there are accusations about prostitution. I don't need to be bringing them up because it's an accusation. Second, if you're gonna be having anonymous things up there, it protects actually your person, so you have no idea if it's the same person sending multiple emails. Have you noticed they even tried to do a wordplay on my name? But really have no balls to say anything else. What's really interesting that I just caught is, in the article quoting for Ms. Jimenez, it was very similar to the wording that Chris Cardinelli just used. And the whole entire time that she's been up here, for four years, she's never once been able to say anything eloquent. And now all of a sudden, she's able to write something that good? Please, we all know it's prepared for you. And, you know, when it comes up to it, and they wanna say what you guys have done, I have the articles, I've been posted on 2016. The streets are already set up and being done. It was by Jack Higginian. It was by Jack Higginian, Vivian Romano, Vanessa Delgado, and so on. You guys are living off the coattails, and you could keep blowing your eyes and everything else, but it's all good. Furthermore, you know, we bought this up as being able to get our three minutes to speak per item, and unfortunately, we have to do it all in one three-minute for open session, and that is a violation in hindering us because there's no way you can speak about five items and speak about a public comment at the same time. And the fact that you guys are actually trying to justify that is appalling. You know, it's kinda sad when you have several members up here trying to say that they were for transparency, and you have a group that was saying for transparency, and we actually have less transparency than we had Francesca Schuler, as well as we had former councilman Jack Higginian. And at least Jack actually did something. But I'm sure you're gonna stop me, but because it's against the three versus the other people. If it was against David, you guys would let me go. Have a nice night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Michael Chee. Followed by Michael Chee is gonna be Roger Jimenez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I come before you this evening as a member of the general public. Some of you on the dais also know that I have deep family roots here in the city of Montebello, including my own two nephews who were born, raised, and schooled here in the city of Montebello. And it's on their behalf and the behalf of the other residents that I address you this evening. I received in my office today a very disturbing lengthy document, which is actually an official legal complaint, and actually a felony complaint. I'd like to use my time to read to you from the first page of this complaint filed on December fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. The Superior Court of California, County of Orange, Harbor Justice Center, Newport Beach Facility. Fyes follows, verbatim. "The people of the State of California, the plaintiff in this case, versus William Paul Cervella Jr., otherwise known as William Paul Cervella, otherwise known as William Cervella. Felony complaint, case number one six HF one three five one." First page of this document reads as follows. "The Orange County District Attorney charges that in Orange County, California, the law was violated as follows. Count one, on or about September twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, in violation of section six four A dash one seven A of the California Penal Code, attempted murder, a felony. William Paul Cervella did lawfully, unlawfully, and with the specific intent to kill, attempt to murder Jane Doe, a human being. Count two, on or about September twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, in violation of section two four five A four of the California Penal Code, designated assault with force likely to produce great bodily injury, a felony. William Paul Cervella Jr. did willfully and unlawfully admit, commit an assault upon the person of Jane Doe by means of force likely to produce great bodily injury. The remaining documentation in this package that I received contains affidavits, police statements, and other information related to this. This is an official legal document. These are facts. This is not hearsay. I present it to the council for your consideration."
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is gonna be Roger Jimenez. Followed by Roger Jimenez, Margot Eisner.
It's been a while I haven't been here, but I'm a resident in South Montebello, twenty-eight years. We've been having a lot of issues as far as, I don't know if you guys, well, I'm sure you heard, the shooting right there on Greenwood and Beach. I live on Beach Street, eleven thirty-three Beach Street. It's just really sad to see that in the south side of Montebello, we're lacking officers. We don't see enough officers over there, and a lot of people in the community have been crying out and talking to me and asking me if I can come over here and speak for them. So a lot of people on Davis, Taylor, just all around that area are just really upset. We don't see that many officers anymore, and now that they just put the speed, I mean, the pavement, they put the speed bumps, and now we're having a problem with the traffic. It's just, a lot of people just speeding thirty, forty, fifty miles per hour. A long time ago, I'm the one that had the city to go in there and put the speed bumps. We had the trucks not to come in through there, but we're still having the issues there. And these people are going like forty, fifty, to me, up to fifty-five miles per hour. So we're asking that if the City Council, I mean, whatever they can do to help the community over there, a lot of people are outraged, and all I keep getting is messages. I have already had two neighborhood watch meetings. A lot of people showed up, and the two of them, you know, separate. So I do have their names. I've been messaging them. I told them I was gonna come over here, but we wanna see some action, something done because we're lacking officers over there in the south side. There was a shooting even prior to the one on, at the Seven Eleven, down the street. It was, I don't know what it was, what was going on over there, but one of the bullets hit my neighbor's car, which my wife could have been going out there moving her car. So these are the things that we're lacking. There's just really more presence of officers over there, and just the people are just getting very, very upset because things are getting stolen, you know, and nothing's getting done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Margot Eisner, speaking on Agenda Items ten, eleven, and twelve. After Margot Eisner will be Rosemary Torres.
Hello. I'm glad I'm here. I'm glad that the public is involved. And boy, that wasn't one Asian person. I guess he wasn't really discriminated against, so maybe you don't really need districts. But anyway, ten, eleven, and twelve are about... Hold on. This is, I think that we have to have a director of finance, and everything done with finances should be out in the public, every detail. Secondly, we have to really evaluate the job that Mr. Bovadilla is doing to make sure he's doing things for the benefit, for the benefit of the city and the people, et cetera, and not necessarily for private profit corporations, et cetera. He needs to be constantly monitored as our employee. And then twelve, I don't know exactly what that was. I'm glad that there's a public hearing, but there was one other thing I wanted to bring up about the thing about paving the streets. It is imperative that, A, for any money you spend on slurry or macadamia nuts or whatever, that the residents and the people who drive the streets on a regular basis are the ones who tell whoever's in charge actually which ones actually need repaving. There's such a haphazard approach to this that I want there to be a way for the people to be able to report that X street has these dangerous things going on. This street needs to speed up. Maybe the thing is this paving is so sporadic, it's so intermittent. So before you spend money on slurry or whatever it is, make sure it's not a computer that's deciding which streets need paving, but the people, residents who drive the streets, say, oh, our street, come and look at it. It's all filled with holes and blah, blah, blah. Like Via Valverde, I keep bringing it up. That is not the street that needed, that is the street that needed repaving. But there's many others in Montebello that need attention, both on the north and the south side. The south side isn't the only one being neglected. The north needs it. So I think there has to be a new way of deciding which streets need to be paved by really letting us, the people who drive them, tell you, this is the streets that need repaving. And I think I wanna really reiterate that over and over. Again, this whole thing is about you are elected to be our representatives. It's, we can speak about the issues, and then you have to carry them out to do what we really want you to do, not what some corporation or some other person from outside does. And the money is our money, and it has to be spent and brought in in a way that benefits us. And that's why this whole thing about freedom of speech and opinion and everything is really important, especially the facts and revelation of all details about everything needs to be in the public record and need to be available, and we need to have input. That's why adding more commissions and things like that need to be done because it's where we live, and we are the taxpayers, we are the voters, and that, you're supposed to represent us, and you're supposed to do what we need and want. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rosemary Torres. Followed by Rosemary Torres will be Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I'm Rosemary Torres. I wanna say thank you, a special thank you to the mayor for the wonderful time that we had Saturday at the Street Fest, but my husband took a little ill, and you jumped. And the fire department, are you guys still here? No. They did an excellent job in coming to his aid.
The city manager.
And the city manager. Renee, thank you. Right away, he said, no, I have EMT here. Thirty seconds, they were there. And Mayor, you threw those tables like if you were a superhero or something while others just looked. I'm so grateful to you. Thank you. I have nothing negative to say tonight, nothing. Just that everyone else can do the negative things, but I won't. But thank you, fire chief. You have a good staff. They came, they put him on the ground and tore his shirt open and started working on him. They were very professional. Thank you again. And after the meeting, I have some treats for all of you. Please come and have some, but thank you. No, no burritos tonight, just desserts. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm so appreciative.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo.
Yo soy una... Okay.
All right.
Ya?
Sí, por favor.
Okay. Yo soy Rosa Tamayo, honorable mayor de la ciudad de Montebello, Kimberly Cobos, miembro del Consilio. Y buenas noches. Quería decirles, yo soy una activista comunitaria y me gustaría que ustedes sigan con sus agendas y practiquen más y implementen más la acta de Robert para así hacer mejores agendas y para no estar con monkey business. Bueno. Se dice los negocios de los changos, vuelta para acá y vuelta para allá. Y también quería decirles que, bueno, ¿quién me va a interpretar?
¿Puede pasar?
Pues está. ¿Y no me quiten el tiempo?
No, pasamos el tiempo. Her name is Rosa Tamayo. She's a community activist and would like to let you know to continue with your agenda and implementing the Roberts rules more often so that we don't have any monkey business.
Quiero agradecer mucho a los, al city manager, señor Renee Bovadilla, y los miembros del Consilio, por el, por julio treinta y la fiesta. Estuvo muy bien organizada, también por David Sosnowski. Y estuvo excelente con el fire department, muy excelente, okay?
She would also like to thank city manager Renee Bovadilla and city council for the festival that was held in July. It was well organized, and she would also like to thank Director Sosnowski.
También al departamento de nuestro chief, Espinoza, que estuvo muy bien coordinado, todos sus oficiales, y especialmente me fijé en un oficial que estaba arriba de un edificio cuidándonos. Muy buen trabajo de todos. Estuvo muy cuidado todo el festival, okay?
She would also like to thank the police department, specifically Chief Espinoza, for organizing staff. There was an officer that was on top of the building, making sure that everyone was secure.
Y la cosa es que tenemos que trabajar juntos y hacer que nuestra ciudad progrese en una manera de mejorar la situación que tenemos. A mí me gusta los pueblos educados, con salud, con transporte, con vivienda, y con buenos trabajos.
She also said, the thing is that we need to work together to ensure that our community improves and gets better.
No lo dijiste todo, yeah.
In the areas of safety, transportation...
Y buenos trabajos.
And employment.
Porque así es como progrresa una ciudad.
Because that's how we progress as a city and community.
Okay. Por eso yo hice Rosa Salao, que tiene provisiones en transiciones para las personas con discapacidad, y yo estaba muy un poco tranquila, pero me voy a poner activa para empezar yo también porque es una ley en derechos civiles.
And that's why I wrote provisions for people with disabilities.
Rosa Salao.
Rosa Salao. ¿Y qué más?
I've been quiet, but I'm going to now become active.
Oh, I've been quiet. I've been quiet, but I'm gonna become more active.
Y pues, a veces tiene, como esta, esta ley es por derechos civiles, y pues, no me gusta que nadie me pise mi cascabel porque yo soy bien vibrante.
These are civil rights, and I really don't want anybody to step on the head of my rattlesnake.
Pues muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you and good night.
Y pónganse a trabajar los que no trabajan.
And get to work, those that don't work.
Thank you for your comments. Gracias por sus comentarios. Next speaker is Linda Nichols.
My name is Linda Nichols, address on file. I find it kind of ironic that people think that they don't have the right to come up here and speak more than once. Ms. Iger is a very good proof of that. She's put in five cards at a time and always been allowed to speak every single time. Nobody's kept her right from speaking. If she would have put in five cards tonight, she would have spoken five different times. And nobody takes away her three minutes for each item that she comes up here. And if the ACLU is gonna allow people to come and talk to the council, well, that's fine, but when the council talks back at you, I think we should have a chance to rebuttal, especially when somebody like Mr. Torres said a derogatory remark about those people, and Ms. Gregorian said that was a racial comment, and then you lauded him in the thirty-three-minute response, even though you were told not to? What about us? We have a right to. So if you want us to talk to you directly, respect us. If you want respect, respect is earned. It's not a given. If you want our respect, I was raised that if you want respect, you earn it. It's not a given. And as far as like, I thought it was kind of ironic that Mr. Cervella came up and he was talking to Ms. Jimenez. So what's the difference? That's exactly what the civil rights are saying, that you could talk to the official. She does. We've all been able to talk to them. We've all talked, like Will said, we talked to Jack and Vivian when they were up here. And yes, they did vote in to fix the streets. There's only one difference. They spent the money that should have been used to fix the streets, and they sold the grants for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a discount four times. We lost a million dollar grant money to cover up the misappropriations of what they did. It wasn't just, this new council came... It wasn't just, this new council came in, streets were fixed. So nobody's writing on anybody's coattails. Cause yeah, they voted in, but guess what? Guess who paid for it? This council.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Mayor, that concludes the speaker cards for public comments.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, are there any, I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, we have one change. We presented to you on the Dyessan update for resolution number twenty-two dash sixty-seven on item number nine. And we wanted to reflect that the updated commercial facade program funds in the amount of eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. And the original amount was one hundred thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. And that's reflected in your staff report.
Great, thank you. And are there any items of community interest?
We have no items, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to...
Yeah, I believe the first item, Autumn Mayor, is the public hearing. Um, item nine, a public hearing to adopt resolution number twenty-two sixty-seven approving the draft fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Annual Action Plan and fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Commercial Facade Program. Uh, is there a staff report on this item?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, here to present tonight is our housing manager, Rosemary Parrish. Rosemary, can you come up, please?
And Mayor, I recommend a brief staff report and then we can formally open the public hearing on this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rosemary Parrish and I am the housing manager here in the city of Montebello. And I am here to present the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. And I have a, uh, PowerPoint presentation for that. Next slide, please. The city of Montebello currently administers the following federal housing and urban development, HUD entitlement programs known as the Community Development, uh, Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Program. I will refer to it as the CDBG and home programs for this presentation. Next slide, please. The community, the CDBG program is funded directly by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And HUD does provide an annual grant on a formal basis to all local jurisdictions such as our city. And, um, these grants are given so that we can carry out eligible activities, um, in low and moderate areas. Next slide, please. The home program is also funded directly by HUD. And HUD provides the annual grant on a formal basis to our city specifically for affordable housing activities that intend to benefit, uh, the low-income households in our community. Next slide, please. The process of our annual action plan public hearing is that the draft annual action plan requires a public hearing, uh, per the city's citizen participation plan. Um, and this process allows for the input from the public regarding, uh, the proposed use of these funds. So on July eleventh of this year, a thirty-day, uh, public notice, uh, for public hearing was issued and it was published in the Daily Journal and Daily News. And copies of the draft annual action plan were made available, um, during the public review and during the public review period on the city's website, as well as our planning and community development department. The proposed annual action plan was circulated for public review, uh, during the period of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two through today, which is August tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Next slide, please. This slide identifies the two thousand twenty-two CDBG home allocations, uh, for this fiscal year. So on the left side of the screen, you will see the CDBG, uh, funding allocations for this fiscal year. And you will notice the commercial facade program amount that was identified earlier. The amount of allocation will be eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents, as well as all of the other activities that will be funded through our CDBG grants. On the right, you will notice the home allocations for this fiscal year. And the total there does say one million, seven thousand, four hundred, twenty-five is the total available amount for programming. And this amount seems a bit large from the previous years due to missing program income that was discovered.
And Mayor, if I may, um, on the facade program that you see, um, that's a new program that we are establishing and it's on the CDBG side and it's for a total of eighty-five thousand, two hundred nine, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We're introducing this this year. Uh, business owners will have an opportunity to get a grant. Uh, there will be a match to the grant, but they'll be able to use those funds to improve facades, uh, for their buildings.
Next slide, please. This slide identifies the total CD, CDBG home annual allocations. We wanted to identify the years two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two. So those are the amounts of the allocations that the city has received throughout those years. Next slide, please. This slide identifies the CDBG funding request for the administration and fair housing. This also shows the allocated amounts from two thousand nineteen through this. This slide identifies the CDBG funding request for the Section 108 loan payment program and as well as the commercial facade program. And these are the amounts that have been allocated from two thousand nineteen through now this fiscal year of two thousand twenty-two. And something to note here is that the final payment related to the Section 108 loan will be on August first of two thousand twenty-five. Next slide, please. This slide here identifies the awarded amounts to all of our subrecipients through the years two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two. And the amounts are there on the screen as well as the, the applicant name, which would be our subrecipients.
Rosemary, Rosemary, did we pay back our voluntary grant reduction? That's the dollars that HUD was taking from us for, for a while because we were bad actors? Are we done paying that money?
I can confirm, I can go back and confirm that, and I will provide you with that information. It's the two thousand twenty CDBG CV Cares Act funding award that the city had received back in two thousand twenty during the, uh, COVID pandemic. And we just wanted to note here that these are the amounts that were allocated that year and these are the subrecipients that received those grants. Next slide, please. And this slide here is, uh, regarding our home funding for the administration and the home programs. And this, these are the amounts that have been allocated from two thousand nineteen through this year of two thousand twenty-two. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, let me know.
Mayor, I just want to point out on, um, slide, there's a slide fourteen.
The next slide, please.
These are our unverified home program, uh, income amounts. And I just want to point out, um, there was a total of, I believe, six hundred thousand dollars that, um, that we had, uh, that were drawn down, that were available to be drawn down. Um, the home out was drawn down and we are not able to verify three hundred and fifty-five thousand and two hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents. We have no idea what it was used for. I think we spent a little over two years trying to find it. Um, we have no idea what it was used for. So, um, we are, we will be reporting that to HUD transparently and we will let them know that we were not able to find those dollars. And just to be clear, those were for the years two thousand eight through two thousand fourteen. Mayor, at this time, we'll, we're available for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just a couple of points. First of all, uh, I too am very interested in seeing if we paid that outstanding debt. Um, as long as I've been on council, seeing that looming number out there and, and all the money that's tied up in, uh, paying actions that should have been correct to begin with, um, has been to this council's detriment. So, uh, very, very much looking forward to being able to use the full balance of those funds to benefit the community, um, today and in the future. Uh, I do have to, um, mention for my colleagues that I have mixed feelings on the commercial facade program. First of all, investing in the downtown area, I think, is absolutely essential. Uh, ever since the beginning, I've had the idea that we need a district and a section in Montebello where we need to invest heavily, show investors and show the business world what Montebello is capable of and take that example and spread it across the city. As we've discussed the general plan and we've talked about commercial districts along our main, uh, arterials, Wood, Woodard Boulevard, Beverly Boulevard, Garfield, Washington, imagining what downtown could be and how that could spread across the city has been a very long-term vision, but something that we've started to act on now. I do have to mention that at, while it is extremely exciting that we're investing this hundred thousand dollars into the downtown area, that it does continue the perception that the South continues to suffer. The money, and it wasn't shown here in the presentation, but the money is specifically for those businesses along Woodard Boulevard, east, east of Montebello Boulevard. There is no allocation for any of the businesses along Greenwood. There is no allocation for any of the businesses, for any of the businesses along Washington. And I understand that there are a couple of different philosophies that you can take as you go about allocating funding. One is making a very strong message. The other is making what might be perceived as a weaker message and spreading it across the city. I will say that for today and for the, for this decision and for approving it, uh, I am excited to see the development of the downtown area. But in the future, council should be very careful to not continue to perpetuate the perception that the South side of the tracks is any different than the North and any less deserving of investments in the businesses and, and infrastructure and so on. But overall, thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate the hard work and these are very, very exciting programs for the community. The, our CDBG funds are the ways that we support our nonprofit organizations. So these are some of the more lighthearted, positive conversations that we get to have and we look forward to the continued service to our community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Melindis, questions are concerned?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have no questions. Just want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Um, yes, first of all, just, uh, you know, it's amazing to see, um, just the ways that as council, we can really prioritize in helping our nonprofits. Um, and just seeing that we have an amazing YMCA director here, Paul, I do want to give you a personal shout out in being able to just really firsthand witness, um, the ways that the YMCA has been able to give back to our community. It's especially, um, you know, I don't want to call it post-pandemic because we're still very into this situation, but we still have families that are facing, uh, food insecurity and we see that by the lines that get, um, the lines that we see every Thursday at the YMCA. And knowing that this money is directly going towards impacting our residents and our families and our youth that are struggling and putting food on the table, um, just want to, you know, commend the incredible work that these types of organizations are doing to augment and really supplement, um, what the city is doing, um, in trying to help our families here. Um, also just, um, do want to reiterate that, um, in the future, I would like to see, uh, that facade program expand to other parts of the cities. Again, we do have, um, I think a lot of need in the South. Um, there are a lot of small businesses there that, uh, would really, um, benefit from these types of, uh, financial assist, financial assistance and upgrading, uh, their storefront, uh, which would bring a lot of livelihood and a lot of vitality to the South, which is, uh, currently missing. And so hopefully, um, as we expand this program, we can see it, um, being dispersed to other sides of, of, uh, Montebello and not just, um, the down, the downtown strip area. Um, and that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Peralta Jimenez, questions?
No, Rosemary, thank you so much for this. Um, this is, when we're reviewing this, this is one of those, um, true, like a feel-good story, the great, good things happening in our community. But I do want to go back to that slide number fourteen where our city manager just, um, I don't think it was clear, very clear to what you were speaking to. So there's some money, uh, missing.
There is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents missing. And we do not have any account for it. We cannot find it. We cannot find what it was spent on. And we are prepared to let HUD know that. And, uh, we will probably face some type of, um, another, another reduction program, I would assume. But, um, we are having conversations with them. We've been talking to them for about a year, year and a half. Um, we know the money was drawn down. We did a drawdown for six hundred thousand dollars.
From what years?
Two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen. And the funds, um, our finance director, I mean, if you want to speak to a little bit more, Michael, of what you've tried to do and what, where you tried to find the money, but it does not exist.
Yes, that was just my next question. So moving forward, I mean, how do we take care of this or address this?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, council, yet, so, uh, working with, uh, Rosemary and, and my team in finance, it, HUD has obviously records of the income that's been drawn down. So what our teams have been doing is literally pulling bank records, um, receipts, looking up old financial records, trying to find proof that the funds were actually drawn down and recorded. What we suspect is there was some probably, eh, not as accurate record-keeping during that period. And, you know, we, at this point, we have to trust that HUD knows what they're talking about and if the funds were drawn down, we just cannot trace exactly where they're recorded to, where they were spent. So there, there's some suspicions in terms of, eh, they weren't necessarily spent on home activities. It might have been spent on CDBG activities and just not classified properly. But, uh, yeah, we, we've been working on it for a good year and a half, just trying to run it every, run it down. And we've identified some of that six hundred thousand, but as city manager pointed out, there's three hundred and fifty-five thousand that HUD says you should have and we literally can't find it, so.
Sorry, Director Solozza. And Rosemary, um, I'm sorry, I'm disturbed by missing money. And it was in two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen, fourteen, so none of us up here, none of us sitting yourselves were not a part of the city during two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen. So it was past council, past administration that just have unaccountable monies. Now, I know statute of limitations, we can't go back that far to hold them accountable, but are we going to be fined for something like this? Or can we be penalized?
Well, it's a finding, so I assume, um, we will let them know that we cannot trace or, or give them any idea of how the money was spent or where it went. Um, I assume there'll be some, some remedy to the finding and, and we'll report that to the council. I, I would assume it'd be in, in terms of maybe another volunteer grant reduction. Yeah, that would be my expectation as well, Mayor. Uh, as what the city manager indicated, typically it's, it's an offset of future allocations over an agreed-upon schedule. So it doesn't, you know, totally upset your program, especially since we'll be self-reporting this and, and trying to comply, so.
Okay. Well, thank you both for catching this and, um, thank you also, Rosemary, for the housing element, first time in history, so thank you.
Well, I got to give credit where credit's due and that was my team. So, planning team was awesome in getting that done.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So that will open the public hearing. It is seven twenty-six. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, do we have, um, any public comments or individuals that would like to speak on this matter? Um, we'll, we'll start with the public comment cards, um, but, and then we'll announce a general opportunity for individuals to speak. So please, Chris?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have four speaker cards. First speaker is Lorraine Richards, followed by Lorraine Richards will be Betty Jane Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Richards. I'm a resident of Montebello, um, since birth. I've never left Montebello just for college and came back. And I'm also a thirty-five-year member of the Montebello Commerce YMCA. Um, my first, um, initial, um, experience with the YMCA was... of the Montebello Commerce YMCA. My first initial experience with the YMCA was with the Youth and Government Program. And that's what I'm here to speak about, and that is regarding the CDBG funds. And this is truly where my heart lies. I love Y and G. I still have this bag. I've had this bag for a very long time. And kind of why I ask you this question is, I didn't bring my laundry, and there are props. When you were 14 years old, did you know how to access municipal code? Was that even something that you even thought about? Were you aware of Robert's Rules of Order? Did you know how to make a motion, how to second, how to make a substitute motion? Those are pieces that these delegates learn. They also get to know about their city council, local, state, who they can access, even at a federal level for Congress. And I speak confidently about the experience that these delegates offer through the YMCA, through the Youth and Government Program. Because I am actually firsthand experienced, I participated in the program when I was in high school. In high school, I would have never been able to come up here and speak. Now, as an adult and through the years, I have spoke in large auditoriums with hundreds of people. And I feel that my foundation, that I have been able to be part of with these organizations, that I do speak in front of individuals or part of this. So, Youth and Government is an outstanding statewide educational program that has been around for 75 years. So, this isn't just some program that has come around and has left. This is something that is solid. And within 75 years, it's a cause-driven organization that focuses on youth development, healthy living, social responsibility. The program as a whole, Youth and Government, also focuses on equity, inclusion, and four core values, which is honesty, caring, respect, and responsibility. And we also keep in mind spirit, mind, and body, which is also part of mental health, which is very important with these individuals. And through the years, the YMCA, in about the last 20 years, has had about 40,000 participants in the program. And here, it's a hands-on program for Youth and Government. And then this is just a timeline of our sweatshirts throughout the years for Youth and Government. And it's a program that the YMCA is incredibly supportive of, and the students participate in. An incredible last statistic is that about 88% of the participants complete college and get a four-year degree. So, those are pretty incredible. And I will like to express that Montebello Commerce YMCA exceeds that. One year, we had 100% that attended four-year college. So, we appreciate your support, and the CDBG funds do go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Betty Jane Rodriguez, followed by that would be Margot Eisner.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I wish you happiness and good health. I'm Betty Rodriguez, in my 80s. I was the first citizen of the month, and also a volunteer distributing vegetables at the YMCA every Thursday. This evening, I'm wearing the most important outfit to me. On Thursdays, it brings me lots of smiles, good mornings, thank yous, and wonderful stories from the recipients of the vegetables. One lady told me that her children are now eating cherry tomatoes, bananas, watermelon, et cetera, instead of junk food. There's a lady in her 90s. When she started coming to the Y, she was wobbly but still driving. I kept asking her if she needed help, but she said no. Now she has her balance, strong voice, and conversation, and also takes vegetables to her neighbor. I and other volunteers take leftover vegetables to our churches and other locations to also distribute. I take mine to our lady of the miraculous metal church. Some of the ladies have their husbands drive them, as they also distribute to parishioners who are unable to come. One lady is an RN at the hospital, and they've built a few shelves for the vegetables. And the nurses come and get vegetables. I understand they love the vegetables. They have long hours, and it's hard for them to get to the market. And there's such a variety, especially string beans. With other volunteers also distributing in different locations, there are probably several hundred needy recipients receiving vegetables and fruit every week in Montebello. All of this happens because of one man with a caring heart for the human race, Paul Parsick. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Margot Eisner, followed by Margot Eisner would be Paul Parsick.
Well, I kind of didn't realize what this is about, and I'm very glad to learn about the CBDG. I learned, I heard about that, but I did not know what it was. And when you think it should be more well-publicized so that other groups and other people could know about it, because it sounds like a wonderful program, to incentivize people to get participating in their community and teaching youth and all that. So, thank you. And I just want to say, because I might have to leave, that I appreciate that there is going to be a new commission, a re-establishment of a commission. It's one of the person's comments, because I really do have to leave, that Traffic and Safety Commission be started again. Once again, it's another way for the public, people, the voters, to get involved in helping to formulate the policies and the decisions and the things of the city. So, I want to encourage that. And then I'm probably going to have to leave. But thank you so much for all your work. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, Paul Parsick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, esteemed city leaders. How do I follow an act like Betty Rodriguez, who I affectionately call B-Rod, and she shows up every week and does amazing work helping us to distribute typically 12,000 to 15,000 pounds of produce on a weekly basis at the YMCA to still hundreds of people? Most of us here on the dais and the orchestra pit, as I affectionately refer to, have been out to help. And you know, you've seen it firsthand, and thank you. Thank you for your support also through CDBG that has been there for us historically, since before the pandemic, to help with funding for families that need a little help, and our preschool, for teenagers, and our Youth and Government Program. But I can't thank Ms. Richards enough for her help with. And Lorraine mentioned 85% of the children to 100% in our case go to college. That many teens receive financial assistance because they can't afford this leadership development program that our model state legislature Youth and Government Program is. And there's a lot of macro. We've had scores of volunteers serve, believe it or not, over the equivalency of 860,000 meals since the beginning of the pandemic at the YMCA, in part due to the support and our partnership with the city. Hundreds of people come every week. I love Betty's micro example, anecdote of children who are eating healthier. Not just eating, and insecure families receiving help, but eating the right things. And it's hard, those of us who are parents sometimes, to get our children to eat well. And lower-income families struggle with that especially. So, that is heartwarming. And one other anecdote I'll share with you, not only are our high school teens not being turned away from Y and G through our partnership and our support, your support, we have Y and G students, former, recent former Y and G students who are attending college, attending Ivy League schools, and attending with full scholarships, when a few years ago, they didn't see the capacity for their family to afford to send them to school. So, you make some pretty special things happen through your support and through our partnership. And I just want to express my gratitude for that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Mayor, that concludes the speaker cards for public hearing.
Madam Mayor, it would be appropriate to invite any other members in the audience deciding to speak on this public hearing item to come forward at this time. Seeing none, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing.
Okay, we'll close it at 7:38.
And the matter now returns to the council for deliberation at discussion or action.
Okay, this item is at council level. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Come on, thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. City Clerk?
Councilwoman Torres? Aye. Councilwoman Melendez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
Aye.
Mayor Cobos-Coflerm?
Aye, vote aye that carries five o. Congratulations to the Y, Heart of Compassion, MAOF, and all that serve the community of Montebello. Thank you. Okay, on to regular business. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, that takes us to item 10. Introduction and First Reading of an Ordinance Number 2453, updated in the Montebello Municipal Code, Chapter 2.16, Director of Finance. Barring any additional staff presentation, I can briefly summarize the amendment. This proposal would modify the Buena Park Municipal Code to change the process for the submission of annual reports. So, subdivision E, as you can see in your agenda materials of Section 2.16.020 of the Municipal Code, which details the powers and duties of the Director of Finance, would be revised to require the Finance Director to submit to the city council, through the city manager, the following reports: monthly report of disbursements and payments, warrant registers, and the required treasury report; quarterly budget projections, as well as one annual comprehensive financial statement and report of the exact financial condition of the city at the close of the fiscal year, as well as any additional financial reports that may be requested by the city manager or required outlaw. This would be first reading. It would come back for second reading at the next meeting if approved by the council. Staff is prepared for questions.
Mr. City Manager, or is there a staff report besides what the city attorney presented?
Anything else, City Manager? That summarizes the item.
Okay, this item is at council level. I'll go down the row. Councilmember Torres, questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get into my comments on the item as we see it presented, I do want to talk a little bit about the history of how we got here. In several of my council oaths for over the last year, I've brought it to the attention of this council that we were not complying with the municipal code as it related to the duties of the Director of Finance and their responsibility to provide monthly reports on the exact financial condition of the city, namely through disbursements and receipts. Even when brought to the attention of the city council, this council did not enforce our own laws. We did not honor the will of past councils and the spirit of this city in terms of open, transparent finances. Finally, after over a year of asking that this report be provided because the Montebello Municipal Code required it, it was finally said that this would come back as a clarification. And it's been kind of interesting to read what this clarification means. Now, there are four elements to this ordinance, that the Director of Finance will provide quarterly reports, monthly investment reports, an act for annually, and the warrant run. Now, what I want this council, or what I would request this council to consider, is that some of this language is a repeat of provisions that already exist in other codes and other laws, that some of this language is already required by other organizations, and that this is a move away from Montebello's transparent practices. Now, first of all, I would like to thank the Director of Finance, the city, and the city manager for the quarterly financial reports. That, as long as I've been on council, that was not a practice that started at the beginning. So, taking the time every quarter to go a little bit more in-depth into what's happened in terms of city finances has been much appreciated. The monthly investment report is already required by California law. Just as we don't include federal law in our municipal code, just as we don't include state and county law in our municipal code, it is extra language that doesn't need to live in our own ordinance. The act for is required by a governing board. It's an annual report that the city is already doing, including that is also a duplication of the duties of the city manager and the Director of Finance. And lastly, the warrant run is also a duplication because we are already required to approve city expenditures. So, essentially, we have three provisions in here that do nothing but write down what we're already doing. What it does take out is the requirement that the Director of Finance provide disbursements and receipts to the extent that council can understand the exact financial condition of the city. Now, in this kind of transparency, council has the ability to ask questions, to understand on a month-to-month basis exactly where we are, the way that it is right now, and pulling language from a staff report and a previous quarterly report, that the numbers are fixed on a quarterly basis. And to my understanding, that is to essentially zero everything out and give the picture that we're matching everything penny for penny. I would be extremely impressed if this council could be that clairvoyant, that in June, on a quarterly basis, that we knew exactly what our expenditures and exactly what our receipts would be. Emergencies like the pandemic, emergencies of the moment like structural failures and whatnot constantly change our budget. We are constantly making amendments. It is impossible that we have that kind of perfection. And not because we're not capable of it, because it's just naturally not possible. What I would like this council to consider is that in addition to this updated ordinance, that I would amend the motion that we keep the language of transparency, of accountability to the residents, and that we continue to ask for monthly reports of receipts and disbursements so that this council can understand the exact financial condition of the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Melendez?
No comments.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes, I do have just a few questions. And this is just to kind of just dissect some of the language for council's understanding and our community's understanding. So, historically, the city has provided council the warrant register and monthly statement of receipts of all payments and disbursements. To provide more clarification for our community and for us, if I can just ask, what is the difference between the monthly warrant registering and a monthly statement of receipts of all payments and disbursements?
Yes.
Thank you, Director.
Mayor, yes. Councilwoman Peralta. So, in reality, what is presented is we do a bi-weekly warrant register. That's included, for example, tonight. It's one of the last items on the council agenda. So, the warrant register is presented twice a month with every city council meeting. That's what shows the disbursements, pay in our invoices, everything that's been done the prior two weeks. So, in my research, I found the use of the language warrant register, disbursements, warrant runs, to be interchangeable. So, current practices, council actually sees the warrant register more often than once a month.
Got it. Okay, so from my understanding, our warrant registrar does what you say, which is it basically provides a list of all approved payments made to the two city vendors. It's a report that just shows us this vendor is getting paid this much, this vendor is getting paid that much. A monthly statement of receipts of all payments and disbursements shows in exact detail all our transactions that have taken place that month, and exactly what position each major account is in, similar to kind of like a bank statement where we have our credits, we have what we spend, and then where our bank ends up being left, or our bank or our bank account, it ends up being left off that month. A monthly statement of receipts, I believe, tells us what the warrant registrar doesn't. It provides us all those transactions that have taken place that month, the current state of all major accounts, monthly actuals, variances, and providing us that context that I believe the simple list of a warrant registrar provides. I think that this will, this report provides us, if anything, the closest actual understanding of what financial condition our city is in in that particular month and allows us to compare month by month as well as past years. A monthly statement of receipts provides our community just that deeper form of transparency and understanding of the conditions of our finances in that detailed form. I see these as being two very different types of reports. And this specific one that is being taken out of, in this item, I believe shouldn't. I think that as council and as our community, we should be able to understand exactly what condition our city's finances are in, in every single month that we're having all these different sorts of transactions. So I would like my colleagues to consider moving forward with the item without taking out this obligation for the city to be able to provide council and our residents all the approved payments, receipts of those disbursements, in order to just really understand on a month-by-month basis where our city lies with our finances. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Portem Jimenez? This item is at council level. Could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to put the item.
Can I have a second?
I'll second the item.
Mr. City Clerk?
May I make a substitute motion? So I would like, oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a substitute motion to move forward with the item without removing the obligation, which verbatim states, "It would be removing to provide council a monthly statement of all receipts and disbursements in sufficient detail to show the exact financial condition of the city." I would like for that language to continue staying within the item.
I second the motion.
Okay, so there is a substitute motion on the floor that received a second. That motion takes priority. It's appropriate to call roll on that substitute motion.
Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Melendez?
No.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
No.
Mayor Cobos Coflin?
I vote no. That does not carry. Two to three.
And the substitute motion fails, which revives the original motion, which is still on the floor, to approve as presented in the agenda report.
Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Torres?
No.
Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
May.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Cobos Coflin?
I vote aye. That carries three to two. Next item.
Yeah, that item approves. It will come back for second reading of the ordinance at the council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Right, that takes us to item 11. Consideration of Third Amendment to Employment Agreement for Renee Bobadilla as the City Manager. Honorable Mayor, City Council, give a brief staff report. So the City Council hired Mr. Bobadilla to serve as its City Manager on July 29, 2019, and since that time, has approved a First and Second Amendment to Mr. Bobadilla's employment agreement. And for consideration this evening is the Third Amendment, intended to clarify the terms and make some minor changes and substantive amendments that I'll cover here briefly. The first change to the employment agreement relates to the council's potential change in structure from a five-member body to a seven. When that occurs, the current language in Mr. Bobadilla's employment agreement that contemplates a vote, a four-fifths vote of five members of the body will need to be adjusted to address the scenario in which there are seven members. So the employment agreement will be revised to state that in the event of a termination, it'll take six-seventh vote in the event there are seven members, and then a four-fifths vote in the event there are five members. The second change is that the term of the employment agreement will remain at five years, but will commence a new term commencing August 10, 2022. And finally, Mr. Bobadilla will be paid a one-time $10,000 performance compensation associated with this Third Amendment. In addition, there are some guidelines and performance standards that are articulated in and exhibit to the agreement that Mr. Bobadilla would like amended. These are articulated, essentially implied roles and obligations of the City Manager in the center-mansure form of government. With that, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Before I go to questions or comments, Mr. Bobadilla, are you acceptable to these terms?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm confused why council would consider these terms, considering that Mr. Bobadilla is already under contract. And I'm going to go into a couple of the points here that are cause for that confusion. First of all, we're talking about a $10,000 bonus. I am not aware of any objective milestones or measures that we're using to justify this bonus. I don't know how this amount came about. Being that we are fiduciaries for our city, we should take care to spend the public's money and not make up numbers for objectives that are not written down well-understood by both this council and by the community. I also don't, or Mr. City Attorney, I would also like clarification on the provisions of the attachment to the agreement. Being that this has been attached to his contract, what happens if any of those commitments are violated?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Torres. So the exhibit, and it's, let me... The exhibit is titled "City Council and City Manager Commitments." Long and short of it is that those commitments are reciprocal. Like any contract, if a term is violated, there's grounds for breach of a contract. I would opine that what is articulated there is implied in any contract for a city manager and a city manager council form of government. In my opinion, I don't see anything there that, you know, imposes a new or additional obligation on either the party that is not already implied at law or by virtue of Mr. Bobadilla's employment position with the city.
Is there a difference between these provisions being implied and then being written down in the contract? As you mentioned, if there's a violation, if there's a violation of the contract, that there may be... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Every contract has express terms, and it has terms that are implied by law. Mr. Bobadilla's roles and responsibility with the city are articulated in the municipal code as well as employee handbooks. I view these as a recitation of that as opposed to new content. So I don't view there being a legal effect to adding this.
So if a council member were to violate one of these provisions, essentially the same thing that would happen as if they were violated at any other time. This wouldn't necessarily go to court. There wouldn't be any monetary damages that would be due to Mr. Bobadilla?
I can't say that. What I can say is that the facts and circumstances of that dispute would be substantially similar with or without this language.
Thank you very much, council. And this gray lang, or this grayness in this provision is what draws the most concern. It's already implied that council should stick to many of the things that are expressed here. However, once these provisions are expressed in the contract, it's my perception that they carry more legal weight, that this document can now be used to claim contractual violations. And I really don't understand, being that Mr. Bobadilla is already under a five-year contract, why council would add this owner's provision to his contract and put the city at risk of paying out any kind of money in case these things are, in case these provisions are violated. The way that business should be run should be through conversations, through understanding, through council, understanding the role in conjunction with the City Manager, and continuing to foster a positive relationship and build that. This seems to draw a line in the sand and say, if this line is crossed, that there will be not just a conversation, but ramifications. But particularly the ramifications in terms of the tax dollars that our residents pay. And as I mentioned, he's already under contract. These extra provisions are unnecessary. So I don't, I think that council is playing a dangerous game by adding these when we already have another four years left on Mr. Bobadilla's contract. And that, Madam Mayor, concludes my comments.
Councilmember Melendez?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of have a different analysis to this specific topic. First of all, like, to address metrics, to make everybody understand, putting metrics on the position of City Manager can be a little bit difficult. Think about it this way. We went through a pandemic, and let's say part of the metric was for the City Manager to have a balanced budget. Pandemic happens, we have to spend more to provide more resources, certain positions get cut, whatever you can think of happens, then we are going to say that it was the City Manager's fault for not meeting that metric. So you understand how difficult it could be sometimes with that specific position of the City Manager. And there are so many other roles that the City Manager takes that don't, definitely cannot be measured through a specific metric system. Second, I think we can all, as residents, as council members, and staff, see the infrastructure that's been brought in here at City Hall. We can see it in the streets. We can see it in the amounts of saving that we've had in the city, just to mention, one, the pension obligation bond that came in right away as the City Manager came in. That saved us millions of dollars, probably maybe 20 million or something like that, if not more, a little bit more, yeah. So that, those are actions that, right away, were all conducted by the City Manager and staff, right? Like, I completely agree with my colleague over here. I think it's a measure of City Manager, council, residents, everybody working together. But I think our City Manager has continuously shown how the city keeps progressing. We see the huge path towards infrastructure, towards our streets are getting paved. We see a balanced budget that's been taking place for the last three years. And Finance Director, I know, we got to give you some credit on that. And we receive the words. We see the professionalism of directors of staff. So we can all see that. We hear that in the streets. You know, when we talk to residents, we hear and we see that feedback. Has everything been good? Have we done, you know, is there no room for improvement? Absolutely not. There's always going to be room for improvement. There's always going to be learning lessons. And we're always going to continue to, you know, to face challenging times. But remember, this staff and this administration, right away, came in, and we got hit with a pandemic. There was a lot of many issues that came with that. And we were still able to come out in front, to come out in the positive, to stay in the green. So let's highlight that. So when this item does come up, it's important for us to, for us to really highlight the accomplishments. Now, I know there's a provision that's been going around, you know, on social media, and there's some issues or concerns. In my perspective and the analysis that I have, and is that this is a, this is to address how council members, has nothing to do with the residents, but how council members interact with staff, right? So we're the policymakers here, right? So what we do here and the policy that we enact, they follow. Staff follows it. So when there is a provision there that is asking for professionalism, and we've had, we've had some bumps in the past, right, of some interaction between council members and staff, we're trying to address that, and we're trying to tell, we're trying to tell all of our directors. We're trying to keep staff safe. We're trying to make sure that we handle this in a professional manner. This is what this provision is really all about. So again, it's something that needs to be stated. I know we all might have a different analysis and a different point of view here. Again, I am completely in favor of this, and I am glad our City Manager is here and that we can continue to, for all of us to collaborate and continue to move the city in the right path. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralta?
Yes. You know, first of all, I do want to acknowledge our City Manager as far as the great work that has been done. You know, we are seeing changes in the city, and I know the work and the team that it takes to accomplish that. And I think that personally, for me, one of the issues that I have is in regards to providing a bonus without those metrics that are being set. And I say this because I feel that personally, those funds could go towards actually making a direct impact to our residents, whether it's a one-time program or providing a bonus or 10 bonuses to 10 employees throughout the city of Montebello, rank-and-file employees that are not yet at market rate, and we're working on that. But I understand that, you know, the work that is being done cannot go unrecognized. I was extremely supportive of the last contract amendment that was provided. And I think that that provides a compensation, a very appropriate compensation for the work that this job entails. I personally just don't feel that it would be prudent and responsible as a financial steward of our residents' tax dollars to provide a bonus of that type without, I think, further explanation or at least some sort of structure or metrics that are just clearly denoted for our community. That's all. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Jimenez?
I just want to thank our City Manager and staff, the directors. I understand, and I think I asked this at the last meeting, the directors are all getting some sort of bonus, correct?
There will definitely be merit increases, yes.
Okay. I want to echo what my colleague, Mr. Melendez, just stated and shared with the fact that when we hired Mr. Bobadilla in 2019, it was only a few months after that we started trying to figure out how to work our way through a pandemic. Something that I don't think anyone in the state, in the county, and just in the states all across the board, had an idea in how to move forward within their cities. It was through the most challenging times, I think, that our people have ever lived through, that our city again was able to thrive. We've asked around. We've met with people at conferences, other elected officials in surrounding cities, and they always have nothing but the best things to say about the city of Montebello and how great and how wonderful they know that through a pandemic, we were able to do very well, keep a lot of our employees. As a matter of fact, I believe we hired a lot more Parks and Recreation staff that were, that were let go from other cities, correct? Now, with consideration in regard to the streets, all of the streets in Montebello need nothing but overdue love, and they've just been neglected for absolutely way too long. One of our residents just brought up 2016 streets fixing, and it was a previous council that got this done. Now, while a lot of our streets were on a priority list, being on a priority list doesn't mean anything unless you have a plan, unless you have a staff in place, and unless you have the money. So Beach Street, which everyone, even people that live in the northern part of Montebello are very familiar with, was one of the major, just, it was one of the biggest concerns in the city of Montebello, because we have people that live in the northern part, northern part that have family members that live down by Beach Street, friends, family, whatever. Everyone has been through that street. I was walking with one of my neighbors yesterday, and he's been here for 47 years. And he wanted to take a picture on the street because he recently had a stroke, and he's just getting back to some physical activity. So I was walking with him. He wanted to take a picture. So I posted it. I shared it. So I was walking with him, he wanted to take a picture, so I posted it, I shared it, and people don't understand, people started posting this on social media. People don't understand that, again, in order for things to get done, we need to have a competent staff, an effective and efficient city team to help us execute these projects. While we will, all across the board, there was, there was more than a handful of deferred maintenance projects that our administration had to face and deal with. It was unfortunate that we couldn't focus on some of the other things that we wanted to get done, but it was really great that we were able to, again, hire Mr. Bobadilla, who was effectively the person that brought, helped us bring in professional, skilled employees, directors, that have helped us, again, move the city into the right direction. Now, with regard to his bonus, it's something that I feel, I agree that he deserves. And even in our, in all these departments, fire and PD, while we didn't have competitive salaries for a very long time, it wasn't something that Mr. Bobadilla did. When he arrived, this was already here. And I think the perfect example is our fire department, because just a couple of weeks ago, we voted on something, and I think for the most part, they were really very excited about. And again, I don't think that any department, the fire particularly, has been in a better place than it is now. And again, it's thanks to the leadership of Mr. Bobadilla and our council. So, thank you, Rini.
And directors.
Thank you. I do want to point out, when we were first selected, we didn't have a city manager. We had interims that were revolving, just like a revolving door. And when you have an interim, nope, nothing gets done. Businesses don't want to speak to you because they know they're only there for six months. And in the city manager form of government, having someone to bring in a great staff and then be able to talk about MOUs that hadn't been done in decades, balance our budget, and mind you, this has been done historically. I don't believe Mr. Bobadilla, our city manager Bobadilla, did get a raise last year, but this has been done historically, because I've been looking. And besides just not having anything go down for two years because we didn't have a city manager, then finally we get a city manager, and then we throw him into a pandemic. And then he had all his faithful troops behind him, all the directors, because he had that relationship, and I appreciate that form of government. And I thank you also, all the directors, because you helped keep us afloat with the captain at the helm, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have two questions of clarification, if I may.
You already spoke.
Right, and I have questions that I forgot to ask.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I think this will be helpful for all of the council, just to understand a little bit better. So one of our colleagues, in a recent meeting, apologized to a staff member for constantly abusing her phone. I just, and I just wanted to ask, in terms of the provision where it says that council will not give staff direction, if, for example, in an instance, a council member sees a homeless individual or an individual experiencing homelessness, and they reach out to the MCAP program, that there's someone that needs assistance, would that be interpreted as staff, council giving staff direction?
I'm happy to take a shot at answering that, Councilmember Torres. As I envision this, you know, the city manager is the captain of the ship in this form of government. If the city manager has set up those lines of direct communication for council members to report, you know, whether it be potholes, homeless, you know, scenarios, nuisance conditions, the city manager, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that he should provide those lines of communications open for the council. So that's how I would expect it to be handled. So the short answer to your question would be no, because there should be a means to report things.
Okay. And just to kind of clarify a little bit more, and it starts to get murky, I think, in this area, but oftentimes residents reach out to, reach out to us. Council acts as a facilitator connecting residents to services. In the instance, for example, there are public safety emergencies, things like that, council would have, does council, I'll ask the question, does council have the latitude to reach out in issues where there may be a threat to life or property?
Mr. City Attorney, let me answer that, because this is very, very important, and I'll say this, Councilmember Torres and the residents, if you call a staff member and there's a life and threat issue, you're wasting time. Call 911. Call 911. By the time you call me or you call a staff member, they have to call somebody who calls somebody who calls somebody. Call 911. It'll be addressed.
And I'll just add that, yeah, just like, you know, members of the city council are facilitators for members of the public, you know, that's your city manager's role. He facilitates council concerns, he's the recipient of those, and he filters those down through the staff, which he directs and controls. In this form of government, if the council doesn't like the actions of staff, then your remedy and the fault lies on your city manager.
And I would kind of like to clarify a little bit, because I'm not talking about a resident having a gun to their head and they call a council member, like, what do I do? I'm talking about in the instance, let's say there is an act of God, there is a natural disaster, there are the Santa Ana winds that come through, a tree branch that seems like it's about to fall, and the resident doesn't know who to call because, for whatever reason in their mind, a tree branch is different than a gun to their head. So in that instance, would a council member be able to reach out to public safety or, because keeping in mind that council, as much as we have this huge responsibility to take care of the community, we are also civilians that are learning the process and learning the resources. And I'm just trying to clarify, because that actually was a situation that happened to myself. A resident reached out to me after a storm and said that they were afraid of something falling, and so I just wanted to clarify, like, in those instances.
My recommendation- Mr. City Attorney, can I answer that?
Yeah.
For the majority, the majority of the members of the council, call me directly. Lot of times, they just handle it themselves, and they know exactly what to tell the resident, like, for example, if there's a natural disaster, all our crews are probably all over the city trying to figure out what to do. Our whole 14 or 15 crew members are out there trying to figure it out. So most of the times, my answer is going to be, I'm aware of it, we're working on it, we're going to do everything we can, but it's a natural disaster, give us, give us some time to address it. If it's something that's different, that requires an emergency, call 911. If you call the chief, if you call a captain, if you call somebody else, it's going to delay the time. So the rule of thumb is call 911. We have a great app. The app works fantastic. If someone sees something that needs to be picked up, you use the app, it goes right through there, so the council members can redirect members of the community to use the app or use the app for them. We'd be more than glad to address it that way as well.
And to the community, I just want to say really quick, I'm sorry to belabor the point, just, it's just that in the current environment, I think just understanding what these provisions means is helpful for everyone. And then lastly, the provision that council will not give directions to city vendors, I just wanted to also understand that a little bit better, especially considering that we're coming up to campaign season. In terms of using vendor facilities, would that apply? And in terms of donations, would that apply? Would those be perceived as council giving directions to vendors?
No. Any First Amendment-protected campaign contributions and the like would be not included in this.
Okay. Thank you so much for the clarification, and I, again, I apologize for belaboring the point, but situations have arisen from miscommunication, so I just wanted to give that opportunity. With that, Madam Mayor, my comments are concluded.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Can I have a second?
I will second it.
Mr. City Clerk, please take a roll vote.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilor Melendez?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
No.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Cobos Cawthorn?
I vote aye. That carries three to two. Onto consent calendar.
Yes, thank you. That does take us to consent. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any items a council member wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. A quick note before I poll the council, item 20 is actually a reso, yeah, is actually a reso that needs to be approved by the Public Financing Authority as well, so I'll first poll the city council, and then I'll circle back on that one, and we'll do a separate vote for the financing authority. Okay, so at this time, I will poll the council. Councilmember Torres, any items?
Item 19.
I'm sorry?
Number 19.
Number 19. Okay, Councilmember Melendez?
No items.
Councilmember Peralta?
No items.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
No items.
And Mayor Cobos Cawthorn?
No items.
Okay, so for consideration is the consent calendar with the exception of item number 19.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilor Melendez?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
Aye.
Mayor Cobos Cawthorn?
And I vote aye. That carries unanimously onto item 19.
If I may, Mayor, briefly clean up item 20 if we can. So now, City Clerk, we can have a roll call for the Public Financing Authority on item 20.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Melendez?
Aye.
Member Peralta?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Cobos Cawthorn?
And I vote aye. That carries unanimously as well.
Thank you very much. And now that does take us to item number 19. Approve agreements with Coastal Occupation Noel Medical Group Agreement Number 3996 and Reliant Immediate Care Medical Group Agreement Number 3997. This item polled by Councilmember Torres.
Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to note, before we vote on this item and approve it, that this item is exactly what I was afraid of when council approved the new exceptions to bidding practices. In those exceptions, it noted that professional services agreements would not have to go out to bid. That would not come before council, council would not be able to see it. With this item, council is considering a multi-year contract with two companies that exceed $500,000. The kind of transparency and the kind of accountability that was provided by our bidding procedures before those exceptions were brought in by a majority of this council ensured that the residents could double-check, and ensured that the council could double-check that we were getting the best bang for our buck, essentially. This evening, I'm not going to be voting yes for this item because I believe that this is in conformance with best practices. As I mentioned, it was exactly what I was afraid of, that contracts for hundreds of thousands of dollars for professional services would not go out to bid. But I will approve it this evening because the majority of this council did approve it, and respecting the decision of this body, I will motion to approve this item.
Motion? Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilor Melendez?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Jimenez?
Aye.
Mayor Cobos Cawthorn?
I vote aye. That carries five oh.
Yeah, and that concludes the consent calendar and takes us to AB 1234 travel reports.
Anybody have reports? See none?
See, yeah, seen no reports for the record. Onto council orals, and Councilmember Peralta?
Yes, I do have three orals today. I'll go ahead and try to not take too much time. The first one is in regards to tenant protections and the resources that are available to our community. Montebello is made up of a majority of renters, and as council, I'm sure my colleagues have received messages from our residents in regards to landlord-tenant issues, evictions, issues with the landlords trying to take advantage of them. And these are very serious, very serious actions that a lot of our residents are facing, contributing to housing insecurity in our city, and residents being pushed out. I wanted to just ask, I'm aware that we do have resources. I believe one time I did reach out, and one of the tenants was provided with someone in the city to help facilitate the issues that she was having with her landlord. And so I just wanted to clarify what those resources were, because I think it's very important that our community is, understands that the city does have those services available, and then also asking council for consensus, for the city to provide a little bit more outreach in regards to tenant protections and resources. I know that in the past, we have done workshops and social media posts, so I just wanted to have a little bit of a discussion on that. So my question is if someone from staff can share the resources that are available in regards to tenant protections, so our community can know the ways that they could reach out in case they are facing any evictions or issues with their landlords. In the past, I've been made aware of these types of services.
Staff?
Yeah. Ms. Assistant City Manager, do we have any resources or programs for the public that we can point them to in this area?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Rosemary can briefly come up and just mention our agency that we do work with. We are funded through CDVG, and she can do that. We can work with our media team to also promote it more on our social media and our website as well. Rosemary?
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Peralta? So I have been receiving many calls ever since I started here. I've been here for about nine months now with the city. So the housing resources that we currently have and that we're directing them to is the Housing Rights Center. There's a phone number that's provided to them, as well as a website. I actually print flyers for them because the Housing Rights Center does send us information, like, on a monthly and quarterly basis, like, with their updated flyers. So I have that information. I also provide the Neighborhood Legal Service. They also have great free resources for our community. I have a housing resource list that I did create, so that when the members of our community call, we're able to address, actually help provide that support by just referring them to these places, because a lot of them don't even know that the places exist, right? So I have that information for you, with permission of Madam Mayor and my superiors. I can absolutely email that to you guys, it's available. We're updating our website as well, so it's going to be there as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that really critical information and resource. Do I need to receive council consensus to have social media posts in regards to tenant resources and protections that the city could connect our residents with?
I'm good with that. Yeah, we can do it.
That's fine. Does an official vote need to be taken, just to clarify?
No, I don't think so. I think you have consensus and direction to staff, right, staff?
Yes, absolutely. We can, we can absolutely work with our city manager departments to get that up for you guys.
And I know, just quick, I know the Housing Rights Center, because I've contacted them, we have a specific person that addresses any Montebello concerns. So I forget their name, but, yeah.
And we have a few people we work with. Residents have called, and they're like, I can't get through, Rosemary gave me the number, and I'm like, okay, hold on, let me connect with somebody. And so we go the extra mile to make sure our residents are provided those services.
Amazing. Thank you so much, I really appreciate that. The next one is in regards to outreach on districting. So since lines have been approved and adopted, I haven't seen much information being shared with our residents, and I know that there is a lot of confusion as far as where residents lie within those boundary lines. So I wanted to just have a discussion with my colleagues in regards to receiving consensus to have the city conduct more outreach in regards to educating our community about the districts and what these districts entail.
Will staff put the website up, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, we have a, on our website, we've had it on for a little bit over a month, is a map. Any resident can type in their address, and it'll tell them what district they're in. In addition, once the filing period is over, we do have budgeted dollars for outreach. We will be conducting outreach closer to the election. As people begin to get their ballots, we'll have information out, and we'll have an opportunity to educate our residents on the new districts. And this is our map. You could see on the top left, you can type in 1600 West Beverly Boulevard. You could see on the top left, you can type in 1600 West Beverly Boulevard, and it pops up, and it'll tell you it is in that blue area, and if you see more results, it tells you that the blue is two. And if there are instances where it's on the middle of the street, it'll actually tell you what side and what district you belong in. So it's on our current website, as we migrate into the new website, it'll be a little bit more accessible, but it will be available as well.
Awesome, if the city can please provide, whether it's social media posts or printing of this, I think it would be great, and we'll provide that resources for our residents that are not able to find this on the website, and having, again, more education and outreach services, whether it's, including print and social media of districting, is extremely important to continue providing that outreach and education.
Councilmember Peralta, if I may ask a question on that point? I guess as a question...
I'm sorry, did you want to ask me for the floor, or did you want to?
Yes, ma'am, if I may ask a question on Councilmember Peralta's point. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. To that, does council need to set aside any kind of budget for print materials? There is a significant population in Montebello that does not have social media access, that won't know to navigate to the city of Montebello website and go through those steps. Much like districting and the confusion around there, there is a huge advantage to print standalone notices. I know that we often rely on the quarterly newsletter or an advertisement buried in the Montebello reporter. As many people are able to find that information, I think, you know, some kind of flag that, hey, this is the district that you now live in, would be very appropriate. So, again, to repeat the question, do we have the funds for that, or would we have to set aside funds?
We have budgeted to do outreach, and your message has been noted.
And that's for standalone mailer?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
That concludes that. Council, my last one is just requesting that the Traffic and Safety Commission restart monthly meetings to address crucial concerns regarding traffic, parking, dangerous streets and intersections. I'm not aware of meetings taking place currently, please correct me if I am wrong, but again, I think that right now, we are seeing a lot of issues with residents. Again, I'm sure my colleagues have received messages in regards to dangerous intersections, speed bumps, signage, I would consider this one of the biggest concerns that our residents do have in the city. We've seen historically terrible accidents and even deaths along some of these very dangerous intersections and residential areas, and so just asking if these meetings could be restarted, if they haven't been, if I have, if I, again, if I am wrong, please correct me, but I think that they are very crucial.
Mr. City Manager, I believe I was the only one that voted to keep the Traffic Commission.
Yeah, Mayor, we do not have a Traffic Commission, we have a Traffic Safety Committee. I encourage members of the council, members of the audience, if they have any issues, please address them to James Enriquez, Public Works Director. We are constantly looking at intersections, looking at other issues that happen throughout the city. I know the Chief Espinoza has been very active in going out to community meetings and soliciting information about traffic, safety and traffic issues. We both have been to several and heard the same issues, and a lot of the issues that we've heard, you know, have been identified, we're looking at ways to create that, and we're looking forward to, in the future, bringing some issues to the council for direction and/or potential studies to address some of the issues that we've been hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. For clarification, does the committee, because I know we did appoint two residents to that committee, do they have, are those monthly meetings current, or?
I believe they meet as needed. I don't believe it's a monthly schedule. Yeah.
James Director Enriquez?
Okay, so, and I don't know if my colleagues would entertain this discussion, but, and I don't know if we need direction for this, but I think that we do have a very long list of just issues when it comes to traffic and safety, and so I would like to see that committee meet, to be able to provide our residents that transparency, that these issues that they're having are being looked into, and that we are doing our best to provide solutions to best meet their needs in regards to their safety in these streets and residential areas.
Mr. Enriquez, did you have some clarification you can add on the status of the commission or committee?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to clarify that we have had orientation with the committee, including the members of the public. I believe one of them was unavailable that day, but we have reached out to him. And just to clarify, the way the committee was set up, it's actually an appeal body for requests, so we are, we do get requests, and we work through them. So if we do deny a request for, say, a blue curb or something like that, then that is a body that the applicant can appeal that decision to, and then eventually it could get appealed to the city council if the committee denies it as well.
Okay.
And we currently don't have any of the appeals that anybody submitted.
So similar to the Civil Service Commission, they convene when there's a matter before them?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Before we adjourn tonight, I'd like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Our neighboring community, Monterey Park Police Department, lost one of their own police officer, Gabriel Solario. So if we can have a moment of silence. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers go out to you, Monterey Park, Monterey Park Police Department. With that, can I have a motion, please?
I have a motion.
Can I have a second?
Mayor, before we adjourn, can we also adjourn tonight in the memory of Carlos Solorza, Michael Solorza's father, who passed away on Monday?
Okay, we're deeply saddened, Director Solorza, we are with you. A moment of silence also, please. Thank you all, and our prayers are with you also, Director Solorza. It is 8:35, we will see you at our next regularly scheduled meeting on August 24 at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.